All right, the recording's on. So, we're live, let's start tonight's meeting. The regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, Monday, May 19th. It is now 6:35 PM. And that is the call to order, the roll call. We do have a quorum, we have five members. Two members are not present, and that is Commissioner Ordno and Commissioner McDonald. And that brings us to item three, which is introduction of agenda and format of hearing, and that's for staff.
So, for each item, we'll have a call to order, followed by staff report. Then we'll do the applicant presentation. Then we'll have public comments in support or opposition. During that, please state your name and address for the record, and please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Following the public comment, we'll have a commission and staff discussion, and then the commission will vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the crust, or to table the item. And City Council's consideration of the zone change will be on the Monday, June 9th, 2025 meeting. Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have two items, the excusal of absence of Commissioner Eisenberg from the May 5th, 2025 meeting, and the approval of the minutes from the May 5th, 2025 meeting. And in terms of new business, we have one item, we have the zone change from single-family residential two to general business on Pearland Parkway. That's back to you.
All right, thank you. So, we'll go to item four now, consent agenda. As was just mentioned, there's two items, that's excusing an absence, and then also the approval of the minutes of the both for the May 5th, 2025 meeting. Does anyone wish to pull any of those items off the consent agenda?
I think we already kicked Commissioner Eisenberg out.
You can't vote yourself out. So, hearing none, if we can get a motion in a second, we'll vote.
Motion to approve.
Please, you know, echo second.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, item number five is items removed from consent agenda, there are none, so we'll go to item number six, which is new business, and I am going to leave the room because I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, like you just said, it comes to new business, consideration and possible action of zone change application, Zone 2025-0069, public hearing, a request by Dunaway applicant on behalf of Jenny Stillgas Smith, Sandra Stillgas Abadi, Marion E. Setegas III, Carlita S. Sealy, Marion Sullivan, Third Coast Resources I LTD, and Third Coast Resources II LTD owner on approval of a zone change for 23.6 acres and 11.59 acres of land from single-family residential R2 district to general business district, general location, north and south of Pearland Parkway, across from Shadow Creek Drive, north of center at Pearland Parkway, Pearland, Texas.
Shadow Creek Drive. Shadow Creek.
Huh?
In general location, it's north and south sides of Pearland Parkway.
Oh, Shadow Creek Drive. What did I say, Shadow Creek?
Yeah.
Shadow Creek Drive. Okay, I'm sorry. And, all right, so, turn it over to staff for presentation.
Make a motion?
Make a motion. I hadn't done this for a while, I've been in Europe, so.
Chair, has a move.
Second.
All right, so we have first and a second, now staff report, sorry.
Chair, good evening, my name is Patrick Brown, I'll be making a request tonight. So, little summary on the request, the applicant's intent is to rezone the property from the R2 to the general business GB zoning, to allow for a variety of uses, including the development of a medical facility. And the R2 zoning district being single-family does not currently allow for a medical facility, whereas the general business would permit a medical facility. Today's staff has received six comments, written comments against the request, and some of the comments have to do with privacy for properties that back up to the development, as well as increase in traffic. And so, here's the zoning of the property, you can see it's all that, it's kind of a yellow with a, call it a red dot in there, so that's the R2 zoning, and it's surrounded by that R2 zoning to the northwest and the southeast, and then you see some R1 kind of across the creek to the east, and then you have a little sliver of general business up here in the northwest, north portion, and then to the southwest is the center of Pearland Parkway, planned unit development with that shopping center. In terms of the future land use plan, the, I'll say, the western side of the, we'll call it the west and the east, the western portion is the mixed-use center place type, and then the more eastern portion is that green natural areas and outdoor tourism place type. And so, here we get an aerial view of the property, as you can see that western portion's undeveloped, the eastern portion is as well, and is heavily wooded, and kind of a mixture of uses around it, we have residential backing up with some more residential across Pearland Parkway coming through, and then you have the trail access here, as well as the shopping center, kind of more southern, and then there's a school and daycare that's more to the north, which is that general business zone property. So, a little history on the property, it was annexed into the city in 1960, and it has remained undeveloped and is not platted currently. And so, looking at the future land use plan, the general business zoning district is consistent with the mixed-use center place type, which would be that more western portion next to the center of Pearland Parkway, but the more eastern portion, that's that area on the other side of Pearland Parkway, is not consistent with the natural areas and tourism place type. In terms of thoroughfare plan, Pearland Parkway is a major thoroughfare with sufficient width. And then, in terms of the Unified Development Code, any development on the property will need to be, will need to comply with the Unified Development Code and the regulations of the general business district, as well as with Pearland Parkway being a corridor-related district, it'd need all those heightened requirements as well. And then, in terms of just because it's a medical facility, if there were to be an emergency room, or any off-site detention, that would require a conditional use permit as well. And then, in terms of utilities, the property has access to water and sewer along Pearland And so, looking at some of the approval criteria for a zone change, staff found that the request met three of the criteria fully, and then, as previously mentioned, the future land use criteria, which is that first criteria, as we previously mentioned, that western portion is consistent with the mixed-use center, but then that eastern portion is not consistent with a natural area. So, that's why you kind of have an orange color, because it's a yes and a no, because of the property being split between the roadway. And so, the request of GB district meets most of the established criteria for approval of a zone change, except for that portion of criteria number one, which is consisting with the future land use map. And so, therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed zone change from the single-family residential to R2 district to the general business GB district. And that concludes staff's report.
Okay, thank you. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We've got several members from our team, but all did the base presentation, whereas you might need to stand or something.
Right here in the mill. And would you state your name for the record, please?
It's Andrew Almond from Beacon Land Services, 1304 Langham Creek, Suite 410 in Houston, Texas. Staff went over most of the site details, where it's located, things of that nature. I'm going to go more over the justification piece, so you can go on to the next one. Obviously, the highest and best use for the land is a mixed-use, like commercial retail, that's kind of borne out from all the different properties to the southwest. We did all those PDs that are southwest of here, we've also done some other, obviously, commercial zoning in the city. We did downzone this application, because obviously GC has some uses that are a little bit more obnoxious, and going for straight zoning, you want to make sure it's palatable to everybody. So, I don't think GC, as a straight zoning district, would fit in here, but GB does a great job. Obviously, with the example from the emergency room, requires a CUP, so that's just one perfect example of why GB is a really good district to have kind of nestled against the neighborhood. This is obviously a two-part zoning case, we have the piece, the track to the north and track to the south, and so, I'll talk a little bit about the track to the south in a little bit, but overall, I mean, we think that a straight zoning district is a really good fit here, we kind of looked at, you know, both going for GC and GB, kind of weighed the options. We obviously do have a developer in tow, they'll speak about that, but in terms of the land itself, because we have to look at this irrespective of any user, right, because this is not a, Kelsey Sebold is going to be here, this is you're zoning the land to GB going forward. So, I think, you know, the GB district does a great job, the city's code is actually really, really well-written, the GB district is, that mitigates a lot of the concerns that the citizens have had. So, if we were going for a GC, I could see some of those problems, but GB is a really good fit. And that kind of goes to my point with the PD, when you're looking at whether you want to zone something to a special district, you kind of look at what you're going to get versus having straight zoning. Kelsey Sebold is just another good example, like, they wouldn't be able to go through the PD process, it's a little more onerous, it kind of puts some clouds on title, and in this very specific case, GB is available to them, and that's something that we can actually go for, so that's the impetus behind going for a straight zone. I think the next slide. And I'll show you a picture on the next slide, but the BDD4 facility, which again, we negotiated with them on the previous developments, provides a great buffer to the north. It's a huge swath of land, it's a very good natural buffer, and then, of course, you have your other code buffers that are built in there as well, but this is a very, very good fit for the neighborhood, because you do have that kind of natural piece. The track to the south, which is in that recreational area, the reason why we need to include that in our case is because if we want to do regional detention, which it looks like we're going to do, or we're going to need to have, it needs to be zoned the same as the track to the north. So, if it's going to be kind of like a joint development, and we're using it to satisfy the drainage needs of our tract and other tracts of, you know, developments within our large campus, it needs to be the same zoning. So, that's why that piece to the south is included, so we can do regional detention. But we don't foresee any reason to go vertical there, but it's strictly for the detention. You know, the high-altitude level staff, again, does a great job of talking about whether it meets the intent of the code, future land use plan, comprehensive plan, of course, you know, driving development, getting good quality, you know, development in the city is a huge deal, and a GB zoning district in this area will do all those things, as the property fills out, you get new businesses in there, it's going to get, you know, obviously school-aged children to go to the different facilities around there, it's going to be a lot of good tax revenue, but it's going to be done really responsibly, because again, it is downzoned to GB. And the first development, again, this is the seller's request here, but the first development, the buyer of the property is going to be Kelsey Sebold. Again, irrespective of the user, they're just going to be the first ones in, so we introduce them, kind of let you know what's coming first. It's the GB district, this is a good example of what that allows for. So, you zone GB, and it allows for things like Kelsey Sebold, which is a medical facility, but not an emergency room, you know, sirens blaring all the time, so, good example there. Oh, I don't know why it didn't pop up, but you can still see it right here, this is the tract, obviously outlined in red, and that is the facility to the north, you kind of see it bending around to the north, kind of that daycare, their commercial use there. It's a pretty large tract of land, just for scale. These buildings right here are anchor buildings, that's Hobby Lobby right there. So, you can see how big of a gap you get with BDD4's facility, and of course, then you have the less intense uses in a GB. So, when I'm looking at whether this use is compatible with the neighborhood to the north, it's a very, very good fit for those two things, the downzoning and because of that buffer. But next?
Excellent.
That's it for me, if you have any questions, just let me know, we do have some other folks from our team here, if you have any questions with them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have...
Hold on, there's others.
Oh, okay.
We've got just a couple more comments.
This is also part of the applicant's presentation.
All right, Stuart Caya, Kelsey Sebold Clinic. On behalf of Kelsey Sebold Clinic, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and just say a few words about what I would say is yet another significant investment that we are making in the Pearland community. I think all of you know, or most of you know, that we've been in this community for decades, having multiple clinics, and well over a decade ago, we actually moved our corporate office here to the Pearland office as well on Shadow Creek, not Shallow Creek, but Shadow Creek. And I get those confused as well. And then, after that, also, our Pearland clinic, which is becoming a large, very tertiary care site, where we take care of patients in home modalities of healthcare, and we are continuing to expand that. But, no, I really do want to thank you for this opportunity to come and just to say a few things. This is a significant investment for us, and why are we making this investment? It's about quality of life. You know, what we know in healthcare is that greater access to care improves the quality of people's lives, it also improves healthcare disparities, it lowers the cost of care, and reduces, excuse me, improves financial stability of the community. How does it do that? Obviously, from a clinical standpoint, we're able to see patients when they need to be seen. Think about a grocery store, if it's in your backyard, you're going to utilize it more. When you have healthcare that's in your backyard, you're going to utilize it more often, and that is often very important in helping us lower the cost of healthcare as we find, you know, significant comorbid conditions, and we're able to treat those economically and efficiently prior to them becoming a major healthcare issue, so. And obviously, just from a business development standpoint, you know, this clinic, you know, this opportunity will allow us to serve, you know, patients not just in this community right here, but in adjacent communities, whether it's east going to Friendswood, or south going to Almond, so this is a, what we think is going to open up more patients to good quality healthcare in the eastern Pearland district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, that opens it up to a person's wishing to speak for or against, I have two speakers here. First one up is Mr. Jim Johnson. State your name and address for the record.
Awesome. Jim Johnson, President and CEO with the Pearland Chamber of Commerce, 6117 Broadway. I'm here today to speak on behalf of our ongoing relationship with Kelsey Sebold. When Kelsey Sebold announced them bringing their headquarters to Pearland in 2011, Kelsey Sebold immediately felt the need to be involved in our community. Over the last 14 years, Kelsey Sebold's been a good steward, they've added clinic steward community, and have the opportunity to further grow in Pearland, and continue to show what a good steward they are in our community, as well as, if not, our largest private employer in Pearland, Texas. So, my comments today are very brief, but I just want to say the chamber does support the city of Pearland collaborating with Kelsey Sebold to allow for the appropriate zone change that enables their growth in Pearland without imposing unnecessary costs or delays. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you guys.
All right, thank you. Mr. Brown?
Mrs.
Oh, Mrs. Brown?
Thank you. Judy Brown, 2901 Downing Street, 77581, and I'm representing the Vanberry Cross subdivision that sits directly behind the property. My house actually abuts the detention area that y'all referenced. So, here's a couple of our concerns, or things we want to address. We're glad it's not being rezoned GC, so we prefer GB over GC, so that's a good thing. Question, the property where all the HEBs and all the way down to the Hobby Lobby, my question would be, could it ever, it's part of a PUD, I guess, it could be rezoned to a PUD if this fell through. It would require another zone change, I'm assuming. Would apartments be allowed in general business? That's one of our questions, because we're not interested in apartments behind us. So, that's a question we have. Another question is, if the detention is going to be off-site across the street, how is water channeled to that detention area? Will it go underground, or is it going to flow over the street? So, that's a concern. I will say during Harvey, when we all got 50 inches of rain, my house was fine, I sit on the higher end, our street was flooded because the water couldn't go anywhere, and it came back around and down into the subdivision. This lady right here, she sat on a corner, and I mentioned it got pretty close to your garage door. Yeah, inches. Yeah. So, just to kind of let you know that difference where she was and I am. So, where the water would channel is a concern of ours. The other thing is, and I know that's not tonight, it's just a zone change, but when the other uses other than Kelsey Sebold come into play, depending on how a Kelsey Sebold would be oriented on the property, would affect, say, the homes, always lighting, would there be any kind of berm or fencing put up along there that might help with, say, We don't really want like a restaurant, or anything that would have a 24/7 activity, just because we're a neighborhood. And we could be in favor of it, we just want to express our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this proposal? Seeing nobody moving, we're going to move on to staff and commission's discussion.
I'm good, friends.
So, okay.
Okay, okay, so, I've read the online opposition to it, and a lot of it was drainage and flooding during Harvey, so I assume that, is the civil engineer?
He is here, in case he has some questions, but the comment was, will it be piped underground? That's correct. There will be, obviously, if it is developed, it'll be channeled to some inlets, and it'll be conduited under the highway. Yeah, that's the plan.
So, you guys are not planning to convey it through BDD4's drainage system?
We probably will look at that, if they will let us, obviously, that's part of the permitting process, we'll approach them, when we work with all the other facilities down there, they did oversize it, but I think when you look at a regional detention facility, you will obviously maximize what you've got. And BDD4, if we can stay away from their capacity as much as we can, we would like to, but we are going to explore every possibility that we can, every development that comes in here is going to be developed to the book, there's no waivers, there's no relief with a specialized district, so it has to be by code, it has to meet all the city's standards. And so, but for right now, that is correct, you brought up a real good point, will it go under the road? Yes, it will, that's the plan.
Okay, and so, there was that, and I'm trying to think, what was the other comment, besides the drainage? But my point is, my...
Just a minute, if I can, for just a second.
Sure, go ahead.
I just want to clarify, Mr. Almond, you said regional detention. Regional detention is typically what we expect from multiple people in a particular area. This detention facility is a common area for just your development, correct?
That's the plan right now.
It's not certain detention for any other project.
Right, yeah, regional detention, what I mean, it's going to be for multiple users. The first one in is going to be Kelsey Sebold, they have their own demand for detention, and there will be other users that come around and will develop outside of Kelsey Sebold.
So, it's regional, but just to the area that's...
Correct, just to the outline, yes, sir.
Well, true.
So, it's not going to accept water from...
Right. Anything not inside those outlines.
Right, it'll improve the stormwater flow if it's not, you know, going correctly right now. That is one of the good things, when you do develop a site, it has to be engineered, you have to capture water that may not be going in the right direction, that's going to be one positive outcome, but it is only going to be for this stack of development right here within the neighborhood.
Thank you. You know, I do apologize for the interruption, I just wanted to clarify that particular issue.
No, no, it's okay. So, I know that this is, y'all are proposing GB, so would you be proposing any type of residential housing, apartment housing?
No, that was one of the reasons why we were ready to go downzones, because when they found out that it did allow for apartments, that's not something they're ready to consider right now. So, they just wanted to go GB, so that wouldn't be on the table right now, so it is one of the good byproducts of having a GB zone, and if they needed to change that, like 50 years, whatever, in the future, they'd have to come to y'all to do anything different, so it does provide that protection for the time being.
Yeah. No, thank you for clarifying that, I just want to say that I know Pearland, they updated their drainage criteria, it's very strict, it's probably the strictest I've ever seen it, especially for anything that's over two acres, and by the time you get through them and BDD4, and, is that tax law? I mean, that portion of it?
No, no.
And, I mean, just BDD4 and city of Pearland is going to be crazy in the detention, and I don't, I don't see them allowing anything that would have impact on the neighborhoods behind it. And other than that, I think as long as it's not apartments, then I'm for it. I'm for it.
Trey?
The only thing that I have to ask is, in your commercial, you're not going to have any, or you're not planning any retail residential on top of retail?
Correct.
In other words, first floor being retail, second, third floor being a residential?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, we're working close, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. What type, is it going to be medically-supported type buildings that you are going to be looking to fill it out with, or?
I mean, right now, the first thought is for that main facility, right, like the main Kelsey building, and as the demand kind of ebbs and flows, there may be office buildings that come in, and maybe kind of support retail, like a neighborhood service type retail, that hopefully is going to come after the investment pays off, so they come in first, do the Kelsey clinic, sometimes there's office buildings that kind of follow, sometimes it becomes retail, so it just depends on how the ebb and flow of the development world goes. But the good thing is, it is kind of tamped down, because again, they don't have that huge list of GC uses, they're just kind of stuck with the GB stuff, which they're perfectly fine with, they have an investment to protect too. You know, their main clinic needs to be protected and buffered also.
Do I have one more? Also, on your detention, are you looking at dry bottom or wet bottom?
I mean, right now, we don't know, I would assume, just for capacity's sake, like the, my gut reaction would be kind of a dry bottom, but that's something that we may be interested in talking to the city about, if it is something that kind of grows and does something different, we could certainly entertain that, but right now, I think, just from a design perspective, you'd kind of go to dry bottoms for capacity's sake, we could definitely, if you want us to have those conversations, as we go forward in the building, we've got the engineer here, and we could talk with him, see what makes sense.
You have a question? Sorry, Darrell. Are you expecting three-story, four-story, two-story?
Do you have a clear timeline already?
And I'm not locking anything in, I'm just saying, what's the general consensus? Are we talking like five, six?
No, we're expecting a two-story.
Okay, just curious.
Right, yeah, so the good news is, we can spread out a little bit more than they normally can, so to get to that third or fourth story, this one, we've got control of the whole piece, and so, I think the idea is to kind of put them in the front, but again, we don't really know where they're going to be on the site yet, so, that'll all be dealt with during the design phase, and again, completely to code also, because it's a straight zone, so no special negotiations or anything weird there.
And y'all are going to mitigate, there's rules and regulations set up for lighting, so that, that's a tech shock, and they're going to take that into consideration.
Because I know the newest phase has that, but the ones down don't, so like, the newest one for Hobby Lobby has a good cast requirement, the ones beyond that don't have it, so.
So, I mean, that's, I've always tried to listen to the residents that, because y'all bought within, y'all bought in a neighborhood with certain things that were laid out for y'all, well, unfortunately, changes. And Pearland Parkway coming through there, to me, there's no way residential's going to go along Pearland Parkway, there's none, especially now that you've got all the businesses and stuff, so it's going to be a business area and stuff over there. Doing something that is going to help y'all, and it sounds like this would, this would be the best fit. I totally agree with y'all with the apartments that they proposed the first time when they came in, it met with a lot of opposition from city, from city council and from us, so, but this here, I think this is a good fit, and I just, I hope y'all can appreciate that they are willing to do certain things for y'all. And anybody else got any questions? Or ask, call for the vote, all those in favor, sign by raising your right hand, all those opposed, same time, seeing none, passes four to zero. All right, that takes us to, is Henry going to come back in, or did he leave?
We don't need him, he's doing a great job, Darrell.
Come in and finish us out, Henry.
Here comes the B team again.
All right, then that moves us to item...
All right, then that moves us to item seven, which is discussion items, city council update?
So, last Monday, there was the first reading of the zone change for the RV and boat storage place that was on Dixie Farm. And leading up to that discussion, we discovered that there is potentially a project on the books for Dixie Farm right-of-way, which changes a little bit of their design that they had going forward, to hopefully skip and have as much, have as little impact to the pipeline as possible. But that did kind of throw them for a loop, and they did make some adjustments to their design plan. All of that said, council did take a vote to approve at 7 to 0 that they would be going June 9th, so it's first meeting in June, first meeting in June with a revised site plan. So, with that said though, that was council.
That's it? That's too fast. The next P&amp;Z regular meeting is June 2nd, is there anyone that knows they cannot be here? All right. And then the city council and P&amp;Z joint workshop will be June 9th. Again, anyone know if they can or cannot, or cannot be here?
I cannot be here.
Okay. Commissioner rattle's out? Otherwise, we'll all be here. Well, that's it, that's adjourn this meeting then, if there's nothing further, at 7:07 PM. Thank you all for attending.
And I apologize, Ms. Brown, I couldn't say if it was a Jerry or a Judy on it.
And you probably have some minutes to say.
If anybody wants to sing a multi-family presentation in front of city council, I don't know if there's still chairs downstairs, but you're welcome to go watch it.
Multi-family, it ain't a monkey.